So what is
Have a heart attack that weekend, but we won.
What is the sixth grade class fundraising for?
Um, it's like a summer trip, I think. For a field trip at the end of the year.
You know, it's funny, just a fundraiser doesn't say what they want.
He said we got in an email that I very briefly looked at. I had to go back to it actually. Due date was too. Like looking on the form, like it just says when they'll be delivering oranges. Say what I need to move.
And when are they delivering those?
The fourth and the fifth.
At five o'clock. Is everyone ready? Yes. Call meeting to order. Port-au-Prince County School District. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance.
For the United States of America. To stand up. A nation. In this all.
Thank you. Like to welcome all of the extra staff and visitors. Thank you for coming and joining us. At this time, I need to remind in order for uh to speak during public comment. We sign up in the chat portion of the Zoom or in signup sheet with the administrative assistant in the physical meeting. Do we have anyone in the chat at this time?
Nobody on Zoom.
Thank you.
And.
And nobody signed up here in person.
And nobody on YouTube.
Thank you. And it looks as if we are missing a student representative.
It does. We may have to skip that portion.
Okay. Then we will. Uh, one point three is signing in a student representative, which is absent at the time. We'll just put that on next month and hope for the best.
All right, we have a representative, but he's just going to be observing today.
Thank you for coming. Student voice is important. This would be the opportunity for public input if we had any. Oh, the agenda changes. Pardon me. Do we have an agenda?
We do. On five point one. We are plugging in um student representative introduction and report. It's not the same person who is our um student representative uh on the board. They're going to be. They're not going to be sworn in, but they will be here and potentially have a report. And then on six point six, need to add in SIA grant agreement. Those are the only changes.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we accept those agenda changes.
Motion for the changes to the consent to the agenda. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Moving forward to the consent agenda.
We'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Motion. Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. This would be the appropriate portion for public input if we had any. Just checking in to see if anyone has followed up.
But he's on.
Online and.
Hope you're raising your hands. Do not have anybody on YouTube.
Thank you. Seeing none in person. We'll move forward now to our educational spotlight. Please welcome. There we go.
And normally, if you stand up right next to Ashton, then you can present to the board.
Oh, Sheila Parkender, which is who may not know me. I have the pleasure of teaching our Intro to Business class this year. As a new CTE teacher, it has been super fun and exciting. Um. I could just teach all day, like fun classes like this. That would be amazing. Um, some couple of things that I wanted to share that we have been doing in class. Um. We kind of started out with some Shark Tank and showing them kind of that show and what it is. And then. They were challenged to make their own Shark Tank and do like an assignment on it. Where they were broken up into groups and they had to come up with. Teams and they had a prompt and they had a make a business plan, a slogan, what their product was. And who their target market was. And a simple way they would advertise it by making like a poster or a quick little jingle. And one of our favorite ones with Sky Meds, it was a. Pharmaceutical drop off via drone. And so they pitched it to the class like we were the Shark Tanks and we all had money to invest in their ideas at the end of it. They come up with their business plan customized. You could do a package order online, didn't have to leave the house. And then their advertising was that they had drones that would show up at the Super Bowl halftime show and it would say Sky Meds with the drones. So. That was just fun to hear their ideas and how, you know, and then we got to invest in boat and stuff like that. Um. I just brought up a couple of some of the examples of the assignments in class things that we were doing. Um, we did a local business research project. Where they all got assigned a business here in town. And so they had to. Kind of show us from top to bottom, you know, who is the business, how is it ran, who are their employees? The history of it, what is their product and their market, their supplies? What's the inventory and what it would look like if you were to run that business? And so. They also had the opportunity to kind of interview the owners and get a little more personal on it, encourage them to get out in the public, connect with the public in that way. And then they gave us just a nice detailed breakdown of it. Um. And that was kind of fun to hear them also being able to talk to people in the community. So this kiddo did Gold Beach Lumber. The products that they supply in the public. Um, you know, this one has multiple businesses throughout the county. And then. The name, um, is it seasonal year round? Do they, what does their overhead look like? And. What kind of platforms do they use for advertising, which Gold Beach Lumber, you know, is on the radio and different things like that. Um. And then this last week, we worked on marketing specific. And so. They were challenged to rebrand a brand that was already current. So we had uh like Red Bull, Taco Bell. One of the students presented their new Taco Bell today and it was pretty fun. And within that assignment, um. A quick one was they did a presentation and so they would do it. Via slideshows. And so the marketing change of Celsius, pretty popular. Energy drink. And then he showed what the new logo would look like. And what the old logo would look like. They had to give a logo and then new slogans. Feel the hustle, not the crash. I'm also talking fast, I don't know how long I have to go. So, um, and then they had to do a new pitch and then add. So that was a little more detailed, you know. Meet Celsius, the energy drink built for people who don't clock out. Fuel the hustle, not the crash. Clean focus, long energy, zero burnouts. Because real drive doesn't need a sugar high, it needs staying power. And then he ended it up with the updated market, you know, so it was challenging them. And then another one like Victoria's Secret, she really took a twist on it. It's still Victoria's Secret. Um. But they offered more like stash kind of things that you could hide from your mom. She really thanked that. It was. Hiding from things from your mom. So it was going into candles and lipstick and perfume that had a secret stash spot. Um, and you know, just kind of renamed it and. Stayed with the pink and stuff like that, but. Her new target market was teens because Victoria's Secrets generally could other generations. Um, so it was just, it's been really fun and entertaining. I feel like we do a lot of hands-on, a lot of discussion activities. I use the book momentarily. We kind of read it together and pull out the big bullet points of what I feel like they should be. Learning in business right now as an intro to business. Um, we've done a couple of case studies as well. And so the last one they did was. A business that has failed. And then they got to investigate, why do you think this business failed? What could they have done differently? Uh, was it, you know, marketing, employments, was it that the boss was embezzling money and it just kind of ruined the business? So. They each got a Google, a different business that had failed and what would you have done different? So it also prompts some critical thinking and um. It's just been really fun. And I brought this to show it's kind of. What we use a lot in class. Um, I could probably take out some stock in this posted, really awesome. Paper stuff that we love to put up in front. And this was just a very basic business plan that we talked about and went over. And then from there, you know, another sticky note emerged into marketing and different things. So. It's been really fun. There's a lot of engagement. Days that were kind of maybe burnt out and people are tired. We'll watch a little episode of Shark Tank and then we'll evaluate it and, you know, talk about what they like that business or not. And then one of them I did break down, it was a food one and they had come up with some different soups that were, you know. Pre-made, you could warm it up and just eat it. And they also offered uh overnight oats. And so I did buy like five different ones and the tomato basil was just absolutely horrible. Um. Most of them were not that good, but. There was one that was okay. And so then we uh wrote the company our review and sent it to them and they sent us a spoon and some socks. So. Kind of, um, and they like the ones with food because then they can look into like, are they still in business? You know, did the Shark Tank people be successful and keep it going and stuff? So. It's been really fun and I enjoy it. And I think that the kids are having a good time. We did have a field trip. Plan to go to Peter's Cranberry down the road here, a local cranberry farmer unfortunately got canceled, but. I liked that one because they do a lot of manufacturing there too. Beyond the cranberry bogs, they have their own products that they put out. Um, so hopefully we can maybe do that again in the future. And then I have brought in a guest speaker from Edward Jones Investments and she was able to come in and just kind of talk into a business relation of. You know, investments and what to think about if you were going to start your own business. So. Trying to keep it fun and light and hopefully they'll want to come back. Make careful coffee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question. Sheila, is this like a one-term class? Does it go all year or how's it?
Um, it goes all year. This will be Intro to Business. And then with the CTE program next year will be Business Two essentially. And we'll expand a little bit more on the entrepreneurial side of things. Um. I've been trying to go off the book a little bit more and just making sure, you know, claim of like global marketing and worldwide business aspects. And then Business Three, which will be my third year with the CTE program, it's a build out. Would be that we could hopefully start a business that is here with the school. We um, so I should have looked at my notes. We have kind of partnered with. Ms. Tomco and the Horticulture Class and hoping we can do something. With the bees and the flowers and the veggies and all the amazing things they're doing and kind of link up and help each program build. And then they are really wanting to do um like a merchandise business is what they keep going back to, but not necessarily. Like shirts, because a lot of the sports teams offer shirts during the seasons, more like socks, um keychains, lanyards. We just talked about these flag pennants. And getting a PHS logo on those and maybe selling like the smaller ones of those, but they had some, some fun ideas to bring. You know, a marketing aspect that is more merchandise kind of vibe versus just shirts. That's, that's the hope when you get to Business Three, but you have to take one and two to be able to join that. So. So I'm like, well, you're sophomore, so you buy, you know. You'll have the pathway led for everybody else. And if you're a freshman, you can do a senior year.
And then once, once a program, a CTE program hits those three courses of study, at least three that they can take. Uh, if a student goes through that, then they can earn a certificate of completion. For, for that program of study. So that's what we're towards.
Thanks for all you do, Sheila.
Thank you. That's it.
Moving to number five, reports. Number one, Superintendent.
So the one uh we added before with um the agenda change, I'd like to introduce Ashton Wood. Um, Ashton is a student representative here. Uh, do you have anything that you are here to share tonight? Are you observing or? During, well, welcome. And Ashton will be joining us um along with M J uh from time to time to observe. And uh Ashton, can you please share with us uh the official name of the first place award that you took as a journalist? Uh, that included one A, two A, three A, four A, five A, and six A students?
Uh, it was a, what was it? It was a. Best, Best in Show news article.
Excellent. Well deserved, nice work. Just wanted to share that. Ashton's the editor of our newspaper and just does a great job and uh. Welcome as a student representative.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, Superintendent Report, uh you have my report in your packet. Um. I have just a few things to share with you. Uh, number one. Uh, we are working on the demographic report and getting all those in informational things into it. Uh, we should have that available for you next month. Uh, the second piece I wanted to share was, I want to thank you all for. Um. The time at OSBA, your time that you spent at OSBA convention. Uh, I thought there were some really good workshops and really good sessions informative on uh. Some of the things that we're working on and some of the things that we aren't. Um, and then I also. More valuable for me than um any of the, the conference workshops was just that time to discuss and talk with all of you and. Um, have the opportunity to, to work on some things and talk at things a little more in depth. So just want to thank you all. But that was really good. Um, the biggest uh takeaway that I had from one of the workshop sessions had to do with student advisory councils. So I'm going to be. Talking with Ms. Williams about that and the student body representatives about how we can uh have a more active. Um. More active opportunities for our students to provide input on their education and what they would like to see and how we move things forward. And then the, the final thing that is not in my report that I wanted to share. Uh, and, and we heard this at OSBA and I know it's been in the papers and such, but uh the state budget is not in a good situation right now. Uh, the governor has uh ordered every agency to uh draft uh cuts. In the amounts of two and a half to five percent. Uh, we did hear a little bit about potential areas that they would cut from ODE, but uh the legislature still has to set the parameters for those cuts. And then it has to go to the departments and they will make those determinations. So when we hear that from ODE, uh I'll have an update on um the actual impact for us. Uh, and it will be an impact. Uh, however, we still anticipate that um even if they hit the five percent. Um. Cut. It's, it's going to hurt us financially. There's no way that it won't, but uh there are some districts that will be. Cutting staff and programs and things midstream. Um. It's a very real possibility for some of them because of the situation that their budgets are in. And we've been in a. An area of stability with that. So I'm hoping that that gets us through, but I'll have update for you. I'm not sure if it'll be the December meeting. It'll probably be January with specifics before all that plays through the legislative processes. But uh. It will be an impact, but I believe that um. We're in a spot where we'll be able to weather the storm. Um, and then have to really look at uh. At those impacts for uh the next biennium and longer term as well. You know, I think that's all I have on. My report unless you have questions.
Any questions from the board? And just moving on to our Pacific Principal.
I'm going to start with general school news. Um, I've been doing the Principal's Coffee every month. Um, have another one December 2nd. On my notes, I have the link for that. Um, they've been welcoming each time. I usually have the 10th grade ASV provide um treats. So they've been bringing me a menu and then I approve that. So then we give to them as a fundraising option and they're delicious. Um, the Halloween Fright Night, just in terms of what's passed over this month, um went really well. We had lots of people coming. It was really cute. And Ms. Johnson's room, they had tunnels kind of under the desks. Um, as such, and just, you know, scaring kiddos lightly. Um, there were movies going on, treats, things like that. Um, but it was a lot of fun and the kids did a great job in doing this.
They scared more than kids.
They, you were scared. But you know, I was impressed because he went all the way, hands and knees, all the way through it where I was like, oh, stand on the side and save my knees, but. We didn't stop. So, um, parent teacher conferences, we had about 20 to 25. Um, and those were two different nights. Um, talked with staff and we were sort of aiming and thinking about maybe doing. Changing it next time um for next year um with the planning committee and maybe doing one night. Um, but adding a lot of activities and doing it for a longer time, having some snacks, maybe doing something in the gym, having contests, things like that. Um. And often what happens is, and I would like some student-led portfolios, things like that, just kind of showcasing what it is that they're doing. So then we have more people coming in for different reasons. Um, often what happens is parents will want to come in and just get the math or the ELA and they ignore all the good things that are happening with our CTEs or PE or activities. And so that's why we thought if we did like. Beach volleyball and then we have some other things, some art on the side. And then we actually do an art activity. So we're talking about doing that and the staff really liked that idea too. So. Um, that was feedback. Um, attendance, we're still looking at ninety to a hundred percent. We do um attendance treats every Friday. Um. Wanting to get on the calendar and I'm still trying to sort of cement the um synergy attendance data. So that I can really make sure that that's concrete. Um, so we can have an end of month um celebration. So. Looking to do that. We also added this month, um, the Birthday Brigade. So um, we have a birthday box. I want the student's birthday. So um, today we had one. We go in and we present the box and they can pick any um item that they would like to. And we um say happy birthday. Ms. Nick was. Um, I thought very outgoing with her um intro into the bulletin, you know, she was just, you know, very animated and that kid felt very special. And then he got a gift. And we're going to go retro too, since we started it, you know, just recently. Um, and then we go into our bulletin. And so um, I think that's going to be a positive thing. Drama Club, they're doing awesome. They wrote their own script. Um, I've gone up there a few times and watched them and they're looking to perform it. Um. It's articulate, it's funny, good voice. It's, they're just doing great. They're working with their blocking. Um, looking for a place right now. I think the last I heard they're looking at Six's Range, but. Haven't heard the confirmation of when they're going to do that. That's December 11th um through the 13th. So I will have more information coming on that one. Um, the boat that we have in the CTE department, um, that one, they did a lot of welding uh over the last few weeks and it's coming together. And so um. It's recruit Hippo has been bringing different parts and having kind of a scavenger hunt of going to schools because all the pieces that was donated to Pacific. Were in various schools and different departments. And so um, he's been doing a good job bringing those and the kids have been welding and. Um, I have pictures too, but not present here, but doing a very good job. Um, safety, we had our first lock-in secure drill. They're changing that terminology next year to secure. So I've been facilitating that um vocabulary. Um, we did have a few things that we were going to work on, um, but we're progressing and doing well. I time everything as well and then um take feedback, go through the details and then follow up. Um, and I include that on my safety document with staff as well. Um, we have all of the keys done at this point. So everybody's safe in and out closets, um, that sort of thing. Um, our printer, we moved from the back room at the end of this hall and we moved it right before school started into the closet that's in front of that. So we had all the mailboxes. Staff had the printer there. So they just finally got the. Electrician to come through and get it hooked up. So um, that is really exciting. Um, and now we have a staffer that's entirely to Ms. Tomco's room, which the staff was really excited about that too. Um, for reasons we don't probably want to mention, but um. Overall, I just think we're progressing and doing well. Journalism, that's what I was going to talk about tonight too. Um, the newspaper and Ashton, please jump in at any time. Um, they got Best in Show, uh the Jolly Rancher. Um, and there was over not just one A to six A, there was over one thousand two hundred and sixty-one participants in all. So. When you're thinking about that, he got Best of Show. As, you know, as a writer for that component, I mean, that's a huge deal. And our paper throughout the state, I mean, was the best and. She wants to add anymore to that. Um, but we also had um other accolades that were here too. Um, we had Echo Johnson, it was awarded excellence in writing and that was just under uh Best in Show. So she scored very high. Um, and then Mary Jane Lewis, Brianna Higgins, and Skylah had honorable mention. Um, so very proud of these girls. Um, they're very outgoing. All the kids just fantastic with all of their capabilities. So they're. Doing well across the state. Uh, this last weekend, we hosted a chess match. Um, it's a USCF rated tournament. Um, so, and I got this from Ms. Carlton. Um, there, there'll be about forty competitors and the competition should be fair. She had to go through special training to get that rating. Um, to, and then they have to have so many within a year to then really be qualified. Um, so it was, I haven't got the feedback because I was doing something different today, but I'm excited to hear about it. Um, we're also meeting at the Port-au-Prince City Council. We're looking to align the student government and also volunteer safety committee. Um, we've been having some trainings that are, that have been going on in the evenings and I'm wanting to be more involved with that, making sure that um students can also join in so that they know if there is an emergency, they too can help out. Um, and make sure that um we're all safer. Uh, the 21st, we are hosting a Friendsgiving, which um is a tradition. It'll be during the lunchtime. Um, kids are getting really excited. Um, we have turkey and ham and all sorts of things coming through. Middle school basketball, right now fifth to eighth grade, we had as of last Friday, 15 participants. Boys, we had about 12. High school, we have 10 that were registered. And varsity girls, we had 12 as of the end of last week. So it is the best sport in the world. So hopefully we can get a few more, but we'll see how that's. Otherwise, in terms of business, I've been working on getting some things clarified, some of the structures in the building. So looking at a discipline rubric and just refining it, making sure it's in alignment for middle school, high school will also be taking that district wide so that we can, kids and parents and everyone will kind of know what to expect as students are moving along. We're also looking at, within the referral process and discipline metric, what are we doing? You know, in sped, our sped process is solid, but what are the processes before that? So teachers are just clear and we're able to help. I'm wanting to put together a library throughout this year that will have all the training needs, both video and in writing that they can go. New teachers next year, they'll know exactly. They're going to watch what the process is, answer three questions, make sure they're understood, that that process is understood. We'll also have that for IT, transportation, things like that. But it's also going to be a library for teacher tools. So that's the area that I'm trying to build and move in for this year. If anybody has questions or needs now, or anything else you would like to see in the future, please let me know.
Does the board have any question? Are you good, Bob?
Yeah.
Moving on to 5.3, our Driftwood Principals Report. Thank you for joining.
Apologies for barking dogs, just saying. It might happen. I would like to acknowledge Shayla's comment on overnight oats, like didn't work here in my house. I tried and a big congratulations to Ashton. I know that was an amazing honor. And I know your mom's real proud because I happen to work with her very closely. Current enrollment is 106. We are definitely lower than we have been in the past, but I have gotten several inquiries from Brookings, which I found kind of interesting and are anticipating at this point that we might have some new enrollees. The committees for the school at this point, we have several of them. But I wanted to mention PBIS and the morale committee because they're included in my report, but I will put that aside at the moment. We did have the Redfish music presentation and I will tell you, it was very interesting. I kind of thought that it was going to be classical music and maybe the kids were not going to be as engaged, but they loved it. The Redfish community engaged them through like rock and roll music saying, hey, do you recognize this riff? It's actually a classical riff that, you know, modern musicians have sort of borrowed. They were very respectful. They had a lot of great questions and I was just so impressed with their engagement. So I'm just putting it out there that we need a music program. And I know it's really hard to recruit people, but would love to find a community volunteer or, you know, something because they love music. We had a PBIS assembly. It was amazing. The staff tells me that they really haven't done a lot over the past few years. The kids just loved it. We played games. They, they wrapped staff members in TP for like a mummy competition. It was, it was hilarious. My third grade teacher, Mrs. McDade had taught her children the road, country road and they sang it. Everybody was just rocking side to side. They completely enjoyed it. And so I am really grateful because this is like one of my committees, the PBIS committee. Mrs. Johansson Meyer, Mrs. Thompson, Mrs. McDade, Ms. Skinner, Mr. Fisher and our new behavior person, Kayla were super instrumental in making that a success. On my report, I have communicated the participation of our teacher, parent teacher conferences. All in all, I'm going to say that was pretty darn good turnout over two days. I'm not really looking at anything super lagging, except maybe second grade. But honestly, we had a really good turnout. So the data is in my report. But I like the idea of doing a showcase. So Mrs. Williams, thank you. That's an awesome idea to promote it with some other, other items where parents might be interested in coming in, whether that's art or something else. We had the costume parade and I was, it was a lot of fun. We had Academy families also attend. So it was great to have them come. And they joined us at the, sort of at the back. I think we had one or two students that joined their classes. I think that that was awesome and I'd like to see that. So next year I'll just invite them to join their classes, their class level, rather than having parents attend or making parents attend. But it was awesome to see. They had a great time. And I was very appreciative that the police department definitely were a presence there to help us with safe crossing. The 12 and under soccer team won the championship against Banden. That was like huge. Yeah, honestly, thank you, thank you. They came in with this amazing, like, well Shayla, you know, this huge championship trophy, which is now proudly displayed in the cafeteria. And I think we have to find a better place for it. They were very proud and very excited and we honored them when they came in that day at breakfast and at lunch. It was super fun. Current staffing needs, we are still interviewing for a one-on-one support for a student that we have. We do have two applicants and those interviews are set up for this week. So I'm hoping we'll have a final decision shortly. The person that's currently fulfilling that role is a substitute. He's doing an amazing job. He's going to be going to UCLA in January. So I'm going to lose him. Very sorry to do so, but support him in his endeavors. We did dental screening. We've done vision screening and that is all done and completed. Our other committee, a sunshine club, has been just so much fun. We did a staff potluck and did a cake just to celebrate staff birthdays. And although I went home sick that day, I understand that my sixth grade teacher took out her guitar and they were singing. And I'm just like so sad I missed that. But there was a soup cook-off competition last Friday and I think there was five or six soups. And it was an amazing, fun way to engage with staff. And it's interesting that our behavior person, Kayla, has won like all of the competitions that we have. Whether it's guessing how much pieces of candy is in a jar, plus the soup cook-off and other things. It's very funny. Second and grade and third grade have just completed their field trip to Elk River Hatchery. I understand that that went super well. We've had a preschool discussion regarding available opportunities through grant funding. I think this is going to be a long haul. We, there's a lot of requirements through grants, but we would really, and I would love to have a, a universal preschool available at Driftwood. There's a lot of moving parts. Mr. Miller and I met with some community members around that topic. And I, there's still a lot of research to be done about, you know, what families are interested. Do they want preschool or do they want childcare? What is that going to look like and how is this going to be funded? And where can we put it? There's properties available that we could do it offsite. So we're still in discussion around that, but it's definitely, you know, one of the, I don't know, something that I think that this community really needs and would benefit from. It was shared with me that, you know, Head Start might not be needing all of the needs and that having a universally available preschool associated with a public school would probably be very beneficial. So I will leave it at that at this point and update you as we go. We had a dog safety class for kindergarten through, actually it was first through fourth grade. Kinders were not included. And it was received really well. The kids loved it. They were excited. And we found out of the, I don't know, 70 children that were part of this training, two thirds of them had already been bitten by a dog, right? And so Barbara came in and she basically taught them, you know, how to, can I pet your dog, you know? I mean, the simple things, because kids obviously just want to put their hands on animals because they're adorable, but that's not always the right choice. So I'm glad we had that opportunity and I'm definitely going to invite her back next year. It was amazing. I have some personal upcoming activities. The South Coast Regional Improvement Meeting, I know that Ms. Williams is also a part of that. I have a Title One Family Engagement Night coming up this Thursday, which is going to be amazing. Mrs. Johansson has done a lot of work on trying to tie in some of our early childhood learning seminars. And we're creating stations so families can see each component of the reading, the science of reading and how it ties in. Practice, give them tools, give them resources as well as books and raffles and all of that. And I encourage you to join us if you are available. I'll be attending the law conference as well. I believe Ms. Williams will be at the beginning of December. We have purchased a V Math Intervention Curriculum that will be used through the Title One Math Interventions. So this is a very structured intervention that our IA, Barbara, who currently does the math interventions, will be able to roll out. I, I feel better that we have a curriculum to do that with. But she will need training. Mr. Johansson will need training and I believe that our fifth grade teacher is also requesting training on the V Math Intervention. These are all areas that we definitely need support in. And so we'll be working out, it's a six hour training, so we'll be working that out. I've been a part of the high dosage tutoring with ODE. I've been attending those seminars. So I have been also talking to our superintendent, Mr. Miller. I would very much like to start a double dose intervention at the end of the day, addressing the ELA and math needs, pulling certain students that are in our MTSS process, the multi-tiered system of support and getting them double dose at the end of the day. They've already received Title One Intervention in both of those areas, but to kind of double it up at the end of the day, I think is important and it's part of what the high dosage tutoring is advocating at ODE. So we're kind of exploring, how can we fund that? And I think that we might have found funds for that. But then also push in an after-school program for homework help or additional tutoring, catching up on missed work. That is going to be a new position, whether it's somebody that is in-house that can do that or somebody outside that can handle that. And there's several things that we need to work out. I think that right now, my biggest problem is going to be transportation. But we're kind of massaging that. And aside from that, I've got a lock-in drill scheduled for tomorrow. And that's it unless you guys have any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Doesn't appear to.
I'd like to know more about the dosage slash double dose.
The double dose? What would you like to know more about?
I guess more about what's going on with the second dose.
Okay, so Title One, the children get 30 minutes of math and 30 minutes of reading, right? And the research is showing and ODE is telling us that a double dose, a high impact dose would be a second set of interventions. And so I'm proposing that like at the end of the day, that the kids that are really low or the kids that we identify in our multi-system of supports, a multi-tiered system of supports. So they're not quite ready to be evaluated for special education services, that we're giving them extra support and it's just going to be the, the basic things that they need to know in ELA and math. So we're just going to try to bring up their basic skills. It's not going to be teacher-led. It's going to be led on the data that we know through IREDDI and DIBELS. And it'll be driven by, you know, what our Title One person is saying that they need. And we'll just give them a second dose of that kind of support. Does that make sense?
That second dose is a second dose of intervention that also is on top of each child still getting their core instruction in the classroom.
I, we would be pulling them at a time that might be social studies, might be science, but I'm really going to focus on the lower grades, like one to three, and provide that support for that group because we know there's a huge jump between third and fourth grade. And we need to get those basic skills in place. And I'm, you guys might want to argue with me, but I'm thinking that if we hit that hard, right? That they're going to be much more successful later on. Right now I've got four, fifth and sixth grade children really struggling because we didn't double down on those interventions earlier.
Okay, thank you. So, so you'll be keeping these students, oh, never mind, you said for science or social studies.
Yeah, pretty much. It's going to be at the end of the day. I'm thinking that they're winding down, they're doing, you know, packing up, cleaning up, all of that. I'm going to have them do that earlier and pull them for the, like the last 30 minutes of their day. And we'll just have rotating groups, but you know, whatever it is that they need the most, that's where, that's what we're going to hit it. And we're going to hit it with a continuation of what Title One is doing.
Okay.
How long will you plan to do this before you're looking at what the results might indicate?
Well, we always are doing progress monitoring, which is the beautiful thing about this, right? So Title One progress monitors like every Friday, just to document how kids are, are doing. And so that kind of falls back to Title One. We will always have the data. And if ODE is wrong, ODE is wrong, but they're saying the more intervention, the better, especially on these basic skills. Because our kids are missing it. So we will monitor it. If we don't think it's successful, we can fade it. And I think that's the way I'm looking at the homework club, that if that's not successful, we can fade it. But I can tell you from prior experience, you know, I come from a special education background that the more intensive services that we can give to bridge those lagging skills, especially when they're young, is super important because that's where we can make the difference before they develop resistance. You know, before they develop an attitude about that extra help or being singled out for extra support. So. So that's my take on it.
And then one last thing, a typical timeline for response to intervention is somewhere between three to six weeks. So if we put an intervention in place, we're going to expect it's going to take three to six weeks for us to determine whether that is an effective intervention for that student, we need to do something else, or they've made enough progress that we get to move on and not have an intervention. Did I misspeak?
Yeah, and that's a beautiful thing about the multi-tiered system of support, that we are reviewing all of the data and we do revate it, we evaluate it monthly before we start to determine whether or not somebody should be referred for an evaluation for special education services. Our hope is that double dosing is going to keep our students out of special education. It's, it's what they need right now.
Thank you. Anything further? Moving on to transportation and maintenance. Anyone have any questions on that report?
The report per se, I guess I'm starting to worry about cost in general, we're going to have to be looking at two and a half to five percent trim on the budget in general. Here we're hearing about a probably worthwhile, worthwhile effort that may require additional transportation at a time where we're anticipating having to cut things down. So I'm wondering how on earth are you going to, we going to make that happen?
Additional transportation is already really in place when we run those after-school opportunities in conjunction with the bus that's leaving here. So it does take a little bit of extra time for the driver, but we already have them employed doing activity run for the high school.
Okay, so the kids, these kids.
It dovetails.
Right, our activity bus.
Yes, a little bit different timing because they're done a little early, so it does add a little bit, but it's not a full, brand-new piece. It's a little extra time to what they're already doing with high school runs.
But at a, but at a somewhat different time.
Yes, because the high school run is at that five fifteen.
Yeah, so they'll even here at three fifteen, three twenty, and then again at five fifteen. And so you're thinking it's going to be a new run, but there's going to be a driver in place.
Yeah, there'll be a driver that's already in place. And so they would go and take care of the younger kids before they come and get the activity run for the older kids. And then there's potential, depending on how long the program runs at the elementary, that they could just go on the same bus, but that's part of what Ms. Wendell's working out.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to our technology report. Thanks for joining.
One of the things I didn't mention in our report too is we're working on asset destruction, allocation, that kind of stuff. So taking our old Chromebooks, old Jamboards, all of those, hopefully recycled, of getting some money back in and then updating the equipment we have and then sort of cycling it down through to get the elementary school up to date as well as the high school as well. So that's one of the big projects that I'm working on, along with the other ones that I mentioned. So if there are any questions or, or anything that you guys are wondering about, I'm here to answer.
Are there any questions from the board?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to our financial report and our CFO is not here.
Kara is not here. If you have any questions, I can work to answer them or we'll take your questions, write them down, have her answer and send out an email to everyone.
Thank you.
I guess I just maybe carry a given question. In our last meeting, we talked about, quote, single audit, which went well, which I'm proud to hear that. But after being at OSBA and having attended some sessions there, what's, what's significance of that term, single audit report? As opposed, I mean, yeah, and then the term popped up here and again, then one of our documents here is a reference to, to the single audit report. So what's the significance of that?
I'm going to have to take that one and have Kara answer that. I believe it's, it's looking at one particular aspect of the, the budget. But I don't have a final answer for you.
Anything further from the board? Moving on then to new business, six point one.
FFA.
Hi.
Come on, if you can join us up front.
So I apologize for not being a little bit kind of guarded and have a full PowerPoint, take at least forty-five minutes of your time, hates and animals and shenanigans. But when, when I came to teach here, I came as a, just a sub, just a long-term sub. When I decided to stay, I was immediately hit up with one student as, when are we doing FFA? And my answer to that was FAA? What, what, what are you talking about? So in the next two years, the same student and more students have jumped on board and really want to get some of this going. So with the big support of Mr. Miller and also Mr. Brown, our previous principal, as well as Ms. Williams this year, we're, we're making it happen. We have changed the horticulture program. It's now CTE. So it's CTE, we're hoping to get some high school credits attached to it as well, but that may be several years down. In the meantime, I'm here to ask you to approve our handy-dandy how to establish an FFA chapter. We did have to be CTE certified to do this, which was the hardest part of this process. The students have already come together. They voted for all of their officers. We have two horticulture classes. Right now, they're being offered is, is Hort One. Just like with the business, it's a three-tiered system. So we'll add Hort Two next year and then Hort Three. We are partnering with SWAP and their agroecology class. And I have taken a class from that teacher on mushroom cultivation over the summer, as well as just talking to, she's been out to the school. We met at the CTE meeting we had. And we are, I am aligning the three classes with her, some of her ecology classes. So it's not going to be exactly the same, of course, different textbook, different style, but it's, that's where the overlap is going to be focusing on horticulture and self-sustaining. And one of the things I always tell my students is that self-sustaining works in this little small greenhouse area that we have. Doesn't necessarily work if you're trying to produce food for a hundred billion people. Okay, that there's a big difference, but in our world, this is what we're looking at. So we have, we're slowly starting to bring various things together. But part of that is FFA, as my students have told me. We have thirty-two students in high school and two horticulture and one beekeeping class and twenty-eight middle schoolers. It's not my intent to roll the middle schoolers into FFA yet. It's just a little too much for me. But in the next year, maybe two years, I do anticipate that there is a place for middle schoolers within FFA. For high school, it'll offer a whole bunch of leadership opportunities, plug in with the community and career opportunities. It'll also offer a lot of scholarships. And we can grow the program and work with other parts of the CTE program like business. Definitely, we've already started partnering with Ms. Carpenter. And we've lost our two beehives, but we're going to get two more with pig sales. And hopefully, we will start making some honey that we can sell and various other things. Program activities, every year I have to have a program activities. We're doing a prig raffle late January, early February. Plant sale, hopefully we do a little bit better this year and last year, but we made about five hundred dollars last year. Greenhouse field day has already happened. If you haven't seen the greenhouse, it's come a long way in a very short time. We're now working on some fine details instead of major holes in the slide and major holes in the door. I'm very excited about that. We're also with grant money. Mr. Miller put together a great grant. Hopefully, we're getting an orchard in there soon, which will help. We are hoping to do a Mother's Day flower sale. If I can get the buds in and what have you, we'll hopefully get those growing on time. My timing's a little off, so we're, we're, every year we get a little bit better on it. And then, as I understand it, we're going to assist in planting, building the community garden park. Mr. Miller's got my classes on, on, on the hook for that. So whenever that comes around, we're going to participate in that. So all of that fits with FFA. We hope to participate in a lot of animal shows. That's what they want to do. So the first thing we're going to do with the students is start preparing for the county fair and see what critters they want to show, because that's where they have decided they're taking it, whether or not I like it. So, but we, we have plans. We are, we are, you know, by fire. We, we do it all by fire. We get it done. We learn our lessons. We pick up. We do it again. It gets a little bit better every year, but I do need the board's approval to go forward with this. I think we have a lot of community support, a lot of student support. And right now, we are largely funded through grants outside of the school. I won't say the school hasn't given us any money because they most certainly have, but we are largely a big community and the FSA provides a lot more opportunities for grant money. I'm also being told that I will learn how to drive the big tractors so that the students can learn to drive the big tractor. So that, that's it. That's just what I wanted to get your permission, get your signature.
Didn't we not have an FSA proposal before?
You did, a long time ago. And I don't know when. It was long before me. I'm told it was very good. But nobody here seems to remember it. So it had to be years ago. We, and if you haven't walked out there, we have the old cranberry bogs. The students last year built a fence, to fence in one of the cranberry bogs. We built five hubo cultures and we did pull out about a dozen pumpkins this summer, and we're going to do a lot better next summer. Because again, we got it going better and better every year. But we did, we did pull out about a dozen pumpkins. Students had fun carving them up and then leaving them in the greenhouse for me to clean up later.
Those are big piles of wood branches and.
Yep, yep, we had to put, we had, we did have to supplement it with nitrogen because it burns a lot of that in the decomposition process. But we are getting good plants out of it. And we went and we do a lesson on cover crops and we planted five seeds. And we're starting to see them sprouts and we're doing much better at keeping the goats out, so. So.
That's a scare.
And that's, and that's it. I just need the school board's permission and Mr. Miller's signature.
Did we approve the FFA charter as, as we?
Oh, second. So I put the charter right here that I, that I put together.
Yeah, I'll get it.
And it is just the format they tell me to use. We may amend it later, but right now I am sticking with the plug and play.
I have a motion and I have a second. Do I, is there any discussion or any further questions, Triff?
Go for it.
All right, call to a vote. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you for coming. Thank you for doing those things. Moving forward, six point two. Thank you. Family Academy curriculum.
Hey, I have a presentation which I think that you all got via email ahead of time, but also we have photocopies if anybody would like one. And I think Rusty's going to put it on the, is this a Jamboard? Sorry. Oh, on the TV. And do you, do any of you want it? And then I also have the handout here, which is the information that we're supposed to provide to the board for the independent poor curriculum approval and adoption for the Family Academy curriculum here. So. So the presentation includes some things to keep in mind and some of those are sourced from questions we got ahead of time from board members and also just kind of big picture stuff. Could you go to the? So just wanted to start with the intent and intention behind required board approval for curriculum and for this approval process. Keeping in mind that the Oregon Department of Education has this process in mind, I think really, well, almost certainly with regular classroom, regular ed settings. And what it's all about is the things that are kind of here at the end, which is making sure that we have high-quality instructional materials in place and that those high-quality instructional materials are not always things that parents have oversight of in a traditional classroom setting. But here, this is families choosing these for themselves and for their families. So keeping that in mind. And then in approving this Family Academy curriculum, your role as board members potentially is to ensure that we've done our due diligence. But I want you to know that that's what I consider like a huge part of my job is to do that due diligence to make sure that families are, are doing academic things when they're in our program and that Family Academy is a homeschool program is having families make those choices. So we're really trying to fill that need where the families are, are making those choices to school at home because they, and you know, they're, they're trying to make a high-quality experience happen for their students. And then the other piece of it that they are in line with Oregon learning standards is also part of what I'm doing as, as my due diligence. So if you approve these, you're proving that, you know, that I've taken a look at them as well. And the Oregon State standards are huge and they are, you know, academic and beyond. So everything that is curriculum that families are choosing is definitely in line with the standards. Although, I guess, like, there, there are fine points there. So the, the key thing is probably that they need to be secular and not religious. And some of the companies do provide religious curriculum, but the parts of it that we would, as a Family Academy, approve as curriculum packages that are for an entire course. So obviously, families might be pulling other things for educational enrichment that Family Academy might fund. But the, the, the curriculum that's in part of your packet here and in the rest of this presentation, and we could flip through and look at individual companies because there's a long list there. Do, can you put the next slide up, Rusty? I think the next slide. So this is a, a list of curriculum that has been selected so far. And on the last slide, one more point about this is that we, as a, an organization, as a company at this point, need to be willing, not company, as a school, have to be knowledgeable, as a school board, you have to be knowledgeable about the fact that we're going to have to probably make changes as the program develops. So this is a list that I have for you to approve right now. But like, if this program goes on for many years and if you have more families coming in and out, they're going to request other things and then we would have to make adjustments and, and get other things approved potentially. But right now, these are the companies that have curriculum that families have asked to use and that we are working with families to use. And that is all that I have, but there's more in the slides that just gone through a few notes on the different kinds of curriculum and what's, what's in them.
Thank you for the report.
And then any questions that you have to address any of those concerns?
A little worried about that, that term there in parentheses, in spirit. That seems to allow a huge amount of interpretation and wiggle room for whether things meet educational standards or not.
And the. That, I think that came from an email from a board member in spirit. So we'll have to go back to that slide maybe to look at what, what that was again, what, because I can't remember the in spirit. Oh, so in line in spirit with the Oregon State. So I, the reason that that's there is because the standards are so big and the curriculums are so big. There's so much there. So even our schools, and I put a bullet point about that in here too, narrow down the great number of standards that there are into power standards. As a teacher, as a regular ed classroom teacher, I'm regularly narrowing down from all of the curriculums, the ones I especially want students to focus on. So I, I, again, this, the language in spirit was in the the question that I was working to address with this slide. But I think that it's fair to say that we could definitely strike that and it would be true that the curriculum is in alignment with the standards.
There's, in all of my years, thirty, getting close to thirty-five years in education and all the adoptions that I've done as a.
um, and all the adoptions that I've done as a teacher and an administrator, there is not any curriculum that meets all of the Oregon state learning standards or any learning standards. No matter what curriculum we purchase in the building or through this program, uh, there are going to be things that are missing and we have to supplement in order to make it work, uh, for what's best for our kids. Um, different curriculums have different strengths. They have different content. Uh, but they are all working to meet those, um, those state learning standards. Uh, mentioned power standards. There are several hundred standards at each grade level in kindergarten through fifth, um, kindergarten through sixth. And, uh, when we went through and created power standards for math and language arts, we came up with the three that are the most important. And that doesn't mean that the other two hundred and ninety-seven are not things that we address or work towards. But if we were going to have each grade level address and meet and master all those, um, standards, it actually takes uh, pretty close to two years at each grade level, uh, to even have a chance to do that. So I, I guess my point is, is that no matter what curriculum we purchase, it is going to be lacking somewhere in terms of how it aligns with standards. But each curriculum and each child who accesses it provides something different depending on backgrounds and, and all those pieces. What we're trying to do here with this program, uh, with Family Academy is to provide support for families. Um, they are, um, families that have been providing curriculum, um, from their own choice. Uh, as they've worked prior to us starting the program and we want to support them as much as we can, um, financially and legally and with our professional expertise. And we believe that the, the options that we're showing you, um, do meet those secular and curriculum standards. Um, in addition, uh, when, when we purchase, uh, a curriculum, it comes to us and we give it to the family. So those ones that are potentially, um, have some religious, um, components to them. Once those arrive here, then we take a look and, um, ensure that those materials are not a part of the purchase. If they are, then we're going to have to re- return them and not follow through with the purchase. And then that same thing, uh, would be happening if we have families that have made that purchase this year and are, um, waiting to see whether it is approved for us to reimburse them. Uh, we would need to look at what they have purchased already and ensure that that is, uh, not a religious piece. If it isn't, if it is, uh, then we won't be able to support it financially. We won't be able to support it with, uh, what, um, what we do in the classroom when they, when they talk and ask for help. But parents are certainly able to use and choose whatever they want, um, especially in this program to supplement our main curriculum. So, um, and it is very clear in our policies and our policy, it's very clear from the ORS, uh, that the board is the one who makes this decision. So we're putting this in front of you, trying to meet the needs of our families and their requests. And most definitely trying to meet the needs in the letter of the law for what our requirements are. But we do feel that these are, um, curriculums that will support our families. They're what they're asking for. And we believe that, uh, we've done the due diligence to ensure that it, it does meet those requirements and that we have, um, a backup check, um, for the, um, ones that are potentially in question.
I have, well, two comments. One, as the board member who asked the question about in spirit, the reason that I threw that in is having looked at lots of math curriculum over the years. There's multiple sequences and I, I completely agree with what Erin said as far as fitting everything exactly into the grade. And so what I was more concerned about is not that things are strictly one hundred percent to the standards, but the general flow of the building of knowledge aligns. And so that if students were to at some point transfer back into Driftwood, that they would be in sync enough that, um, that would work out and we're not leaving them astray by.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm a retired educator. Okay.
That's good.
So, uh, I can, I can live with being assured that due diligence has been done and you've identified out of, out of the rainbow collection of, of, uh, standards that are available, what you're describing as power standards. But I don't want there to be a wiggle room about whether they're ethos standards or not. If you've got these things, these programs really need to, and it shouldn't be matter of subjective or, or debate or, well, kinda, it, it needs to meet the standards. That's, I guess that's fine.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense too. And, and I'd like to reassure too that there's processes in place and, and that there will continue to be and, and that it's somewhat in flux about exactly what that looks like. But we're working through Family Academy and making sure that assessment is, is included, obviously. And those curriculum packages have assessment included in them. And that assessments come back from the families and that I'm looking at, at their progress. And so the ensure that we don't leave souls in knowledge and learning.
And then I had one more question was when I clicked through on the links that you provided us, there were two of the curriculum that looked to me like they were not secular. And it sounds like what you're telling me is that there is a way to buy a secular piece of that and that that's what you would do. So that was another concern. I just don't want us to get into legal trouble. I'm happy for families to use whatever works for them, but I just don't want us to be in legal trouble with many government money.
And, and so the two that were in question.
Are the, the good and the beautiful and the treehouse. Yeah.
Yes. And those are the two that, uh, we have, um, been reviewing. And when we look at the materials for purchase in specific content area, uh, the materials that we looked at did not contain, um, religious materials in them. Once we order something and get it in, again, when it comes to us, we need to look through it and make sure that there's nothing else that's embedded in there. And if it is, we would have to return it and work with the family to come up with another option. And then, uh, the other piece is, is that as we go through this, if, if something is approved, whether it's good in the beautiful treehouse, schoolhouse, or one of the others that we didn't catch something in. If something's not right and, and we do discover it, it's going to be something that we have to pull and, and address and not make available.
So I think, um, one of my questions then has to do, um, and, uh, when you say if it's not part of the, the core. And in the treehouse, schoolhouse curriculum, when I was looking at that and I was on the webpage, there was a place and I went back to try to find it again and I couldn't find it. But it talks specifically about writing Bible verses. And I'm assuming that's part of the ELA curriculum. And so are you considering the copy work penmanship instruction to not be part of the core curriculum? And that's why you're feeling that this curriculum is acceptable with them writing Bible verses because, um, from my personal perspective, I don't have a problem with children writing Bible verses. But as a school board member where I'm responsible for public funds, I have a problem with children writing Bible verses. And so, um.
So the treehouse curriculum that I've looked at didn't have that in it. So the, I are, we have families who had already purchased it and weren't even considering that they would maybe get it reimbursed because they had seen that requirement and seen that the first thing when you Google it, it says it's biblical. But their curriculum, and this is, I guess it's probably part of the reason is that the children are really young. And so they're not doing that yet. They're like copying letters at this point. So we, what we could do is with this page here that has the requirements, we could lower the grade level here because they are copying whole Bible verses at this level that the students are currently using it at. So it was sort of arbitrary that I asked you to approve it for grades K through four. And we could leave it at just K and we'd look at K first or something. But I just wanted to let you know that from what I've seen, again, it doesn't have anything religious in it.
And, um, what I would say is that it does not, even though you do not approve supplemental materials, you are your approval needs to come for our core, um, instructional curriculum. Even though that is the case, if there is something that you don't approve that is religious, we can't purchase that with, um, we can't purchase that with public funding either. Whether it's, uh, whether it's core or whether it's supplemental, if we are purchasing it, it still has to meet the standard. You have to approve the core instructional curriculums. And those are the ones that, you know, the parents shared with us that they would like to have. If there is one or two of these that you are not comfortable with, then you've got to do your due diligence and not approve that. I would, I would hope that when we get to the end of this, that, um, we, we feel that all of these work. But if there's something that doesn't work for the board or for one of you, as you go through your discussion and talk, then I'm hoping that we approve the list without that one. We could come back and do some more research, answer questions. Um, or, um, or you approve. But the options are all yours. Um, and I do believe that we, we have a good request in front of you. But if there, um, is something that you noticed, by all means, there is a lot of curriculum there. And in our diligent research, we certainly could have missed something. So, um, if there's something that you caught that, that makes you wary and you just say no, then that's one piece. If it's something that makes you wary and cautious and you want us to do more research, we can do that for you. Um, or you can approve and go with our plan that, uh, we are, we're going to be looking through those things and double checking to ensure that we are meeting the standards for curriculum and for state law around religious materials.
My, my second, um, question that I have is about the good and the beautiful. And, um, I actually have used that curriculum when working with a family who wanted some additional support for their student. And there's many components that I loved about that curriculum when I was working with it. I love the artwork study that they do and, um, all of that. And at the time when I was looking at it though, it also had like biblical verses and biblical stories as part of it. And so when we were doing the, um, the screening and stuff, they wanted, um, my email address so that I could download the curriculum. And I didn't want to give out my personal email address. And it, it was late at night, so I didn't feel comfortable calling you at ten o'clock at night and saying, hey, am I allowed to download this curriculum on my school district email? Because I don't want to get in trouble for doing a biblical no-nos in my school email. And so, um, uh, I, I would like to look at that curriculum a little bit more. And I know that they have at least a second edition now and possibly a third edition. I'm not sure where they're at in their editions of that. Um, because I had some questions about that curriculum also. And then my third question is, in the original email that we had on the twenty-eighth of October, there were three other curriculums listed there and they're not on the list here for approval. And so I'm wondering when those curriculums dropped because there was something in them that was not approved. And so we're not looking at those three curriculums anymore? Or what was the story on those?
So I think what happened from, for me in preparing this for you for approval is that I had to sort of like carefully try and define what would be considered curriculum for an independent curriculum adoption versus what would, what it came clear was like, uh, considered supplemental. And so I, I think that those were, we deemed those supplemental. And so we took them off of this list because if we started to try and have you approve everything that could be considered supplemental curriculum, that list would really become overwhelming. And so that, that I sort of drew a line there. This is more like for curriculum, which cover these certain subjects. And those ones, because they could be considered supplemental, I took off of this list because teachers are supplementing all the time. And, and maybe that doesn't need to be something that you approve.
Yeah, it's not something.
That's okay. That makes sense.
Yep.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. But again, I want you to know that even those supplemental materials, even though, though they don't come in front of the board for official approval, they are, we are still working to meet the same criteria. Uh, those materials that we do put in front of you for full curriculum have to meet.
My question is more about when to expect further submission of curriculum. Are we to expect this periodically through the year? Are we doing this annually? Um, if this is not approved as presented, would we see other submissions later?
Okay. So if it's not approved as presented, then obviously there's some concerns you have about specific programs on the list. And we are going to be going to, uh, try and address your concerns and delve deeper into those curriculums and try to make it something that we can support for families or we learn that we can't use that. And then we have to share with our families that if you want to use those, you'll have to pay for them yourselves. Um, in terms of what comes up in the future, there, uh, I would say there's not going to be just a certain time every year where we um, address curriculum. I would imagine that we could say every August, we probably will have something in front of you if we have new families come in so that we get ahead of the game before we're, or it could even be July. So we get ahead of the game for purchasing with new curriculum. Uh, but the other requests are going to come in, in two different ways that I anticipate. Number one, a family could be working on something and they continue to do research and realize that they would like to purchase a, a different curriculum and use a different curriculum. If it's not on our list, we would be doing our due diligence and then putting it in front of you to approve that. Uh, the other element that would happen is when, if and when we get new families that come in. And it would be the same thing. If they, the approved list or items and curriculum that they choose to use, then there's no need to come back for approval. But if they have something else in mind, something they're already using as a homeschool family, um, and we feel that it's something that we can support and, um, then we're going to put that in front of you for approval. And that could come at any time of year when we get a new family in because we want to meet their needs as quickly as we can.
So I think my concern right now is with those two curriculum that are potentially have some religious content. Um, and I appreciate the work you've done and the work you said you'd do. And that, that makes sense to me. But I'm a little uncomfortable getting them on an approved list if it's something that has kind of a likelihood of as we get to know it, we may be like, oh, wait, this isn't approved. So is there an option for a, um, you know, a tentative approval or, uh, on, um, probation approval for those two? Or is that really just adds to the confusion?
Um, I, I think you could call it that if you wanted to, but I think it's just going to confuse it. You're either going to approve it or not. And you're going to decide as a group whether you want us to pursue, um, sharing that more or if you've seen enough that you're just voting it down. Does that make sense?
Can I make one more home address?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, again, I wanted to just point out that there were a couple of families who are already using this. And it is already their core curriculum. So that's what they're using regardless of whether we say it's supported or not. So then what we've said as a program is that we will, uh, one of the things that we're providing for families who are part of Family Academy is funding for things, curriculum, enrichment. So if this is the, to their minds, the way that they're going to give their student their core curriculum and we don't fund that, that, then we potentially have this pocket of money that we're then using to fund something else. And this might still be the place where their core curriculum is. Well, and, and again, they, for both of these, they happen to be a lot of, a, a large number of our enrolled students are quite young. So they're doing, the copied work they're doing is individual letters. And it's really like, you know, they're working on poor literacy and math skills. So whether, whether or not you, and I, and I don't really need to make a plug for it one way or the other, but just to let you know, they're using them regardless. And then we've offered them curriculum and enrichment funding regardless. So that's just something for you to.
Yeah.
Reason for putting them on a list.
Okay. No, that's fine. I have absolutely no concern with them using it. If that's a problem, just only, I'm not a problem. I'm just only concerned about us as a school district paying for them if it turns out. I'm just only concerned about us as a school district paying for them if it turns out.
And I, and I do have a couple of, um, purchase orders on my desk, waiting for approval or denial, depending on what happened.
I think where I'm at is that, um, I'm willing to make a motion of the curriculums that I have no question about. And not mentioning the two that I do have concerns about. But that doesn't mean that I'm not willing to look at them at another point with more information. I, now that I know that I can download like the Good and Beautiful on my school district email, so that I'm not getting spammed on my personal email, um, I'm more than happy to download those and look at them more closely. And, um, I also agree that when it comes to like looking at curriculums, there are so many homeschool curriculums available. And in actuality, um, most of the homeschool curriculum purchases are going to happen by the end of June or the very beginning of July. That's when a lot of their curriculums have their sales. That's when a lot of people are buying them because Oregon may be a state that doesn't start school until after Labor Day. But many states start school like first week of August. And so, um, those curriculum companies are running their sales and things in June and July to get those people to purchase their curriculum.
That's when schools are purchasing too, because we're preparing for the next year and such, yes.
And so I would expect that there will be numerous times through the year where we might be looking at a curriculum.
I guess my final question would be, has this been reviewed by any legal counsel?
Legal counsel? No, I've not checked with lawyers on these.
Do we have any further questions or discussions from board members?
Just, I would think I, I guess I expressed, I think I would, uh, would want to see a stronger statement about the, uh, that the, with these curriculum, uh, meet at least the district's power standards.
That they support our graduation requirements and meet the school standard.
Special staff or all kinds of decision where, where curriculum is concerned. So if, if there's been an effort and there have been, our standards identified, then as long as we, is, is, is there is a strong expectation that these home curriculums meet those standards? Okay. Not in the spirit of, but actually meet them. Okay. And I'm, and I'm okay with it.
And I am open to a motion.
I may, oh, I'll make a motion to approve Acelis, All About Reading, Blossom and Root, Bookshark, Oak Meadow, Right Start Mathematics, Singapore Math, Timberdoodle and Khan Academy.
I have a motion to approve Acelis, All About Reading, Blossom and Root, Bookshark, Oak Meadow, Right Start Mathematics, Singapore Math, Timberdoodle and Khan Academy. I'm open to a second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
Part of my discussion, um, I would be willing, after a chance for further investigation, to consider the curriculums that was not made in the motion. So I'm not saying that I wouldn't still be willing to consider them and approve them in a future meeting. But at this point, I just feel like I'd like a little more information before doing this.
Can I clarify that the Good and the Beautiful and the Treehouse are the only two that you didn't recommend in the motion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Right. All in favor of this motion? It's like it's unanimous. Thank you for your time and your diligence.
You.
Moving forward to 6.3, approval of Division 22 standards.
Okay, and, um, in front of you, not in your packet, is the same document I believe I had last, uh, time. It says that we are in compliance with all Division 22 standards. The one that, uh, kept us from being able to have final approval at the last meeting was the curriculum question. And so since you have approved those curriculums for, uh, the Family Academy, now that question is a yes. All the instructional materials we're using have been approved by the board. So this document can go forward with us in compliance with all Division 22 standards. And, um, and those other two curriculums aren't a part of the, um, the approval process at this point. They would be continuing just as if we had a new family come in. So, uh, we would still be in compliance.
Thank you. Moving forward to, do we need a?
I have a motion to approve.
I'm open to a motion.
I move that we approve the Division 22 standards as presented.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? I'm moving forward to 6.4, approving an MOU.
First one is the Athletic Director. Okay, so, um, what we have is an MOU with our Teachers Association. When we negotiated with them, uh, last spring, uh, we came to agreement on extra duty schedule and did not address the Athletic Director stipend that's in their contract because our Athletic Director stipend, uh, last year was in the administrative group. Our Vice Principal position moved away. Mr. Stalard is still our Athletic Director and, um, not being, uh, in the administrative group anymore. He's in Teachers Union, which puts him under the Poulter Contract, which did not address adequately the needs of a stipend for Athletic Director and all the responsibilities. So we have in front of you an agreement which, uh, addresses that particular stipend, bumps it up. It, uh, puts him in, um, in a realm of covering middle school and high school athletics as the Athletic Director. And his stipend is kind of middle of the road with what we have in the region. Uh, it's not at the top and it's, uh, no longer at the bottom. But trying to make things, uh, fair with the change we had in his, uh, position and employee, employee groups. So that's what that one is.
Yeah, I'm open to a motion.
I make a motion to approve the one pending between Port Alfred Langley School District and Port Alfred Langley's Teachers Association Athletic Director.
I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between Port Alfred Langley School District and Port Alfred Langley's Teacher Association, uh, Athletic Director Special. Extra duty.
There you go. You got that.
Now, do we have any discussion around that?
Have we covered this for the future? Has this, this been moved into the table for the for the future contracts?
He, he is in the teacher's contract and this would address the extra duty stipend for Athletic Directors in the teacher's contract.
So this is amending their contract.
It's amending, yeah.
Is now appearing, being moved to the, to the.
It was always in there, uh, because the Athletic Director has been part of the Teachers Association before. But when we dealt with the extra duty stipends, we did not address bumping that one up because it wasn't part of what they were negotiating. Cause he wasn't in their group at the time of negotiation. But then when he moved in there, realized that he was pathetically underpaid and we needed to adjust it to make it right.
I have, um, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, bring it to a vote. All in favor to the memorandum of understanding? Unanimous? Yeah. Moving forward to another memorandum of understanding, 6.5 tuition reimbursement.
So in our, uh, contract negotiations with Classified, uh, one of the items that came up was tuition reimbursement. We have that in our license contracts for obvious reasons to help teachers maintain their, um, their professional license and status and be up to date on the latest things happening in the classroom. We, uh, felt in our negotiations and came to agreement that, uh, we should have similar tuition reimbursement for Classified when it relates to their current position or helps them build skill in an area that's needed for the district. Or more importantly, um, in my mind, and especially at this point, is helping us grow our own. Having people in the classified ranks who we know are effective with kids, go and take the, the right courses and get their credentials to be teachers in the classroom. And we have a couple that have done that, um, and, and been quite valuable for the district. And we have a couple that are in process of doing that right now. And so we came to agreement at $6,000 to support, uh, their tuition reimbursement and help them in those endeavors when it helps the district as well.
I'm open to a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with OSEA for tuition reimbursement. Is there any discussion? Bring me to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous? I'm moving to 6.6, our SIA grant agreement.
Okay, so that was another piece that was provided to you, um, in writing, uh, on paper at the meeting. It is, uh, basically the same student investment account, uh, agreement that we've had in the past with our, with our targets for, uh, data with our, the pieces that we shared at our last data workshop with graduation, uh, five-year completers, ninth on track, third grade reading proficiency and regular tenders. This does not add in officially, um, the math piece yet. That'll be in the next agreement, uh, that we will be asking you to approve. And then we have to post it on the website and jump through all the hoops. And this is one of the things that drives me nuts, uh, about ODE in this process. Definitely things to be aware of and understand, but we have three to four hoops to jump through every time I have to do this, so. This is a, thank you. Have a good evening.
Can I say?
There's no differences here. It's the same.
They're the same, they're the same target data, um, that we're working with. This spring, we'll have another, um, updated meeting with ODE and, uh, go over how, um, our progress towards making those and see if there's anything to adjust. But last year when we did that, there was not anything to adjust. Those goals still looked adequate for what we were trying to do. And our, um, our focus areas still stayed the same. Supporting SEL, uh, social emotional learning with counselor, supporting those things and communication with our community liaison, supporting CTE and our teachers and any dual credit options we have. All the pieces that we spend our, um, SIA money on, are still valuable and necessary for us to use those funds in order to be able to provide those services.
Thank you.
Then what's to discuss?
There's a lot to consider, but I wonder if there is anything.
Yeah, there's 28 pages of, uh, material here. I'm not.
That's what I'm saying. It's a
That's true.
It's same, it's the same brand, same terms and we approved it before. So what's to discuss?
Yes, we, Tara and I have, um, quarterly reports we do on this with, uh, financial reports and, uh, reports on what's happening with the initiatives. And, uh, those progress reports are also things that you see at different times of the year, uh, that we share with you. Make tribute to the public and, um, and then we jump through the hoops of posting on the website, which I'm not sure anybody's ever clicked on that button.
I have.
You have. I should, I should have known that before I opened my mouth.
Thanks for.
Yes.
Do you need a motion to approve this or is this?
I do have to have this approved, um, accepting the, the grant agreement. And then once you do that, then, uh, we post on our website and we turn in, um, our little form to ODE that says that we've, we've jumped through those hoops.
I make a motion that we approve the Student Investment Account Grant Agreement as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Student Investment Act Grant Agreement. 39281. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving forward to all business. We have our OSBA elections. EC, our Legislative Policy Committee.
Hey, we'll make a motion that we place our vote for Janet Holland.
I'll second.
I have a, a motion and a, a second squared. Is there any further discussion or any consideration? Right? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Sounds like it could have got into a tussle.
Right.
Moving forward to seven, oh, yes.
I, I just have a question on that. So I'm just wanting to clarify, is that something now that Stephanie submits or you submit?
I think I have to maybe click a button or do I say, it's in a public meeting, we did this, but, uh, yeah, Stephanie follows up with?
I just want to make sure it gets up with and doesn't fall through a crack somewhere.
Holding is important. That and moving to the 7.2 Policy Update Project. Thank you for updates.
Okay, so, um, I have one element of the policy update project. I'm not, um, going through those with Carol and Stephanie at this point. But one of the things you asked of us was, uh, to determine where that, is it $7,200?
$7,840.
$7,840. Uh, where that, um, seven, eight grand would come from if we had it this year or if we needed to wait until next year. And, um, you know, you as the board still have the decision to make there. This is, this is your work and what you want to do. Uh, my initial thought was is that we could take the 25 free ones and tackle those this year and then embed that, uh, $7,800 into next year's budget. Um, and talking with Tara and Stephanie, our recommendation would be different from that now. Uh, we would recommend that we go ahead and do that now. Are you okay if I share? Okay. So, um, a portion of the reason is, is that, uh, when you look at our ending fund balance, we're still pretty healthy. And so we could get that and take care of it. And, um, if we have, um, some budget woes, $8,000 is not going to make or break that. Uh, and we, we do need to have our policy updated and addressed. There's way too much that's out of date. Uh, the second piece that we discussed is going through that and doing that. The second piece that we discussed is going through that and doing that. Stephanie is going to be retiring at the end of the year. And having a new person come on board and tackle policy that does not have a history with that policy or a history with dealing with OSBA and how policy gets changed, all of those pieces I think would be really difficult when you're talking about an entire overwrite or review of what we have. So that for me was the deciding factor. Stephanie said that she would agree that she would be okay tackling it. It makes a lot of sense to not have somebody come in new and have a giant project like that that takes some familiarity and expertise. So that is my recommendation is that you, if you so desire, you vote and approve and direct us to to make that happen. If you, if you don't like that option, then my second, second option would be what my original first was. Tackle the 25 and then embed it next year. But I think we have a stronger budget this year and we have that support in the office to make it happen.
So it looks like they've given us three options. Am I interpreting that correctly, Stephanie? Okay, so these are our real charges. I guess a swag, okay.
We have about $7,200 in the budget right now and Tara felt like we could, and Erin thought we could pull.
We can find the other amount.
I think I'm missing the options. Thirty-nine hundred.
There's two pages before that. Yeah, so there's more.
Oh, there is one. There it is. Backside of a different one.
So it looks like there's one that takes a number of meetings with board involvement and there's one there. They'd say the policy desk rewrite that they do by phone.
There's one that you guys don't have to get into. It's done between us.
Okay.
And then we present at a meeting.
Okay, like the middle option.
Otherwise you guys are getting back into meetings, which we talked about, but it's not a real deal. So I would recommend one that just goes on between our office and them and then we present it to you. And that one would be the change on forty-four. And notes, phone support, nobody's OSB needs to know. It's the seventy-one eighties, the policy.
In that case, we would be pretty much zeroing your budget for the year, but we wouldn't be extending it.
I appreciate how far in depth you guys have looked at our options. Thank you for getting into it and then everything more.
So zeroing our budget, you mean the, the school boards?
Yeah, the allotted money we have for you for a year.
Is that for the rest of the school year?
Yes.
Okay.
Does not go, you, you start over again in June or July.
And how would that affect our ability to attend the board's ballots and?
We would still be able to find funding for that.
Thank you for supporting.
We're gonna have a car wire.
And a bake sale.
Well, and the other board thing that we have with the staff survey, which is also in the, so that's something that also costs us money that we want to consider, so.
Is this something that requires today? Is this something that?
That depends on what you want to make it happen now or not.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the policy desk rewrite at seven thousand one hundred eighty-five.
You have a motion? And I have a second to support the policy desk rewrite for the OSBA policy review at $7,180. Do we have any discussion? Further discussion?
I just really appreciate us looking at this because as a board and as we learn going to conferences, our first response to anything should be to go and look at what policies we have. And in order for our board to move forward in that responsible role that we have as board members, I think it's important that we're looking at policies that are up to.
It's like insurance. You know, relying on a 10 or 11 or 12 year old policy that's not going to pass muster in court debate, you know.
No, that's the other nice thing with OSBA. I think, you know, many years in the past, there were a lot of things that policy might be written and put together by the board, but now every single thing goes through them. It goes through all their legal processes. It gets adjusted when legal precedents have changed or new things come up, so it's, it's really a pretty wonderful service we have.
Okay, I'm through the discussion. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
I didn't mention Carol, you have it still.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to.
Thank you for collaborating so well. I know it is a big project. Moving forward to reoccurring business, we have our school board timeline update and review. Member, we have survived our convention and find our sense of the board meeting, we have an executive session. It's like January's work session needs to be scheduled and the staff survey as discussed would begin.
I, if maybe since we're spending our board budget, we don't really want the BA training January. And so we also have like it's data, another mid-year data review coming up somewhere in February. So maybe we really focus on a work session, a timeline that works for staff to do the mid-year data review work session.
I'm hearing you say January's date to be determined as a work session should be board development without ordering additional training from OSBA.
If we want to do that, yes. Yeah.
Right, right.
Sitting around reading policies until we're bored.
Yeah, don't start reading now. You'll have to do it twice. What we, so what will we do with our work session then on the to be determined date, January, if we're not doing a training?
I'm hearing board development. If, do we have substance for our work session beyond a staff survey?
Didn't. Memory is blown. We just recently were talking.
Was it over the new the new assessment?
Incoming standards to meet.
That's now been.
Yeah, that was the, when we did our data workshop, they talked about the incoming new criteria between eighth grade math.
And picking a local metric.
And yeah, was it one or two?
I think it's two.
So those are things that we would have to consider, what metrics would be suggested? What metrics would serve us us?
And will that information be available by January?
I'm not sure.
Are we looking at the data itself or are we looking at what metrics we would consider valuable?
I thought that we were, at some point we had talked about looking and talking about like what the the two assess, the the one that we as a district decide.
The optional ones that we have to choose.
So I think, I think to answer your question, it's both. There's always going to be review of data when we have a data workshop, but I think that there's, you know, in terms of the local measures to pick, it's probably a recommendation to come from principals and then share with you.
Which we just did.
Yeah, see, this is a work session and not a data workshop. This sounds.
See, I'm, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh, I'm just wondering if it's actual data review or if it's something that we need to have more of a dialogue about. If it's a chat or.
We had our, we had our data review.
Yes.
They presented, identified and why they, why they had chosen those things, they, what they're going to do about it, et cetera. Happy with that.
And then we had requested a mid-year data review also. So like one in the fall, one in the.
In February. One in February. I, I'm thinking that we can just scratch the January meeting. I'm thinking that it's kind of pushing the whole district assessment choice because we need to give the principals time to look at what they have and make recommendations and suggestions and. I make a motion that in our calendar, we determine that the work session scheduled for January be canceled.
I have a motion.
I have an alternative.
Do we need a? Hey, I have a motion and a second. Please open the discussion.
Well, when we were at our recent conference, we stumbled across and heard some things that sounded very intriguing to me. One of them was information from one of the presenters where they were discussing how their board had gotten together and created for themselves standards. And I thought that was very intriguing and interesting thing that we could make use of.
Agreed.
That was the idea where the board goals weren't really just goals for Erin. They were like, what sort of training we're going to do or what we're going to commit or our attendance or whatever.
What we're going to be, what we're going to be, the items that we would check off to say, yes, I am an active, engaged, participating board member. What do we expect of ourselves? Just thought that was a great idea.
And we have district goals. You have goals. Does the board have?
No.
Well, we made, we made.
We have goals for the district. We don't have goals for ourselves.
And was that part of the training that we did with Janet? Was that for the district goals then?
Yeah, it really came out of what that one district did. I can't remember which district it was.
That was, it was Heidi Seib.
Oh, Yumatilla.
Yeah, Yumatilla.
Yeah, she's been there for, she's probably close to the longest seated superintendent in the state.
Eighteen years, nineteen years?
Yeah, she's at least in the top five.
Then I have.
So whether we do that in January or at some other time, I just thought that that was a good idea that we should explore at some point.
I like that too.
I think that could be a very productive discussion, even if we don't come together with the actual board goals. I think that talking about what our values and how we show up in the community would be a healthy discussion. So I have a motion and a second to cancel the January work session. Do we have any further discussion around this? Seeing none, call to a vote. All in favor? I'm okay to cancel that. I, and that was yay?
No, I'm a no.
That's okay.
A no. I'll tell you why I'm a no. I'm a no because I like Bob's idea of discussing.
Oh, and doing that in January.
Yeah, and so anyway, I don't have a problem that we've just voted to cancel it, but yeah.
We technically voted to cancel it.
Oh, but I can make a motion that we reinstate January's work session to do.
Oh man, Vince is going to be so proud of you. I have a motion to reinstate it. Do we have a second motion?
Well, since I voted no, I'll second this motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to do over. Do we have discussion around this and interest in scheduling a January work session? This is when we get verbose.
Okay, in this, my, my motion was specifically to do Bob's idea to discuss our plans as board.
So I'm hearing that at least one or two board members would find value in coming together for a work session to discuss board goals, priorities, values.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else care to offer input? I'll do that. All in favor of scheduling a January work session? Do it, unanimous.
Goals for board.
And now it appears we have to get down to the date if we're scheduling it.
Angel, you are so good at date choosing.
Oh gosh.
You have it there.
Yes.
I'm always happy to go flexible with you.
Do we want to do an evening or a weekend?
I don't know.
I bet we don't need two hours. I mean, I, do you think we could do it in an hour, that discussion?
Yeah.
We could do.
Maybe we could generate some kind of a survey. We could sit amongst ourselves or, you know, come up with some ideas and we just get together and then sort and select.
For samples from others to share and at least have that sort of.
What about Monday, January 12th at five o'clock?
Works for me.
I think that's a yes.
I gotta check my, your massage.
I knew exactly what you were.
Does that work?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, who do you go to? It sounds like Tuesday and Wednesday are open. It's one of those days. January 12th.
At five?
And Erin, do you know Heidi well? Could we possibly get samples from her board of some of the goals they've chosen just to spark?
I don't know her well like I know others, but I know her. And I know enough of her that if we ask anything of her, she will take care of it. She is pretty amazing. And she's very knowledgeable. So what would you like me to get from Heidi?
Just some samples of the goals that her board created for themselves, just to give us some ideas of what's worked for them.
In context, the examples that they gave were like a percentage attendance for personal attendance at meetings and things. And then the fun part that they put forth was sending, participating in school culture and being able to send pictures like to each other, like I'm at.
Certain number of things they were supposed to go to.
Making sure they checked in with other members to just remind them like, yeah, we had a thing. And there's all kinds of things that we could put in there specific to our community culture and things that we would like to see showcased.
Is it Heidi an email? Get started.
All right, then. We have a motion and a second and we've voted. That's Monday, the 12th at 5:00 PM.
Good job, Angel.
Should we be considering the January to begin the staff, staff survey and having that also scheduled? Or is that not yet? Or is that something that?
I feel like that's the next.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, no, because I'm not, yeah, I'm not quite off the timeline yet. I'm looking at the timeline just to see like as I'm going down this. Are we considering February? Are we looking at filling in any of these dates? So I haven't quite moved on, but I'm wondering if we should look at the other dates that are to be determined before we get specifically to that. look at the other dates that are to be determined before we get specifically to that staff survey. It's just the next to be determined. And I don't know if we schedule it or if we look at the February work session or if we wish to wait until those are more in align with what we have here.
I guess I don't understand what you're asking about because we've got staff survey review for the February board meeting.
Correct. What I'm looking at is these two dates in January that are to be determined. I'm wondering if we need to establish both to move on with our timeline update and review, or if we uh, should allow that one to be moved into the eight point two.
Well, I'm thinking our timeline on the staff survey was intended to get input for us for Aaron's review. So it needs to be early enough that we can get that. But the next item on our agenda is the information that Stephanie got from Christian Miles. So we have to decide if we want to pay OSBA to help with that survey or how we're going to do that survey. And so the timeline might depend a little on what we actually decide.
So we're a content then schedule.
I think so. That's how I would see it.
It appears to me we've satisfied eight point one.
Although, throw one more thing, and we do have a TBD in February for a work session for a mid-year data review. And so I don't know if February is the right time for, um, school staff, when that actually makes sense, but.
It would, um, it would because, uh, February you'll be at the end of the semester. So everything will be final for middle and high school grades and checking on ninth grade on track and, and how they performed with passing, failing classes. And then, um, they do their second round of dibbles and I ready and all that assessment that happens in January. So February would give them time to compile data and share.
Okay.
Would you wish to schedule that now or should we?
I bet we could wait till it's a little closer to actually schedule, whatever works best for you. Oh, but yeah.
Everyone's in agreement with that? We'll just push that off then. Uh, are we ready to move to eight point two then? Discuss. All right, that will be more of the con. Eight point two staff survey for superintendent's evaluation. This is something that OSBA does.
And they don't recommend we not try and do it ourselves because it could get us in a lot of trouble.
And they take this as like third party and they own the information is my understanding. So we don't have, yeah.
And from my perspective, I, I would appreciate having them involved because things can go sideways with staff surveys if they're not on track. So it'd be helpful from my perspective.
Yep, this is a, an additional one, funded $2,000 to do the survey.
I think it's part of the services we pay for to have access to.
Access to, there you go. I feel like it would be very helpful information for us to at least try for a year. And then if it's not, if it ends up not being useful, we can reconsider. Thank you, Ash.
All right. And is it a motion I'm looking for?
Again, this is, you just pulled the trigger on and OSBA does the survey. And presents us with the information.
If I'm reading this correct, it sounds like correctly, it sounds like we do have some work to do in that we have to help them decide who to get the survey out to. Is that, is that how you understood that, Stephanie?
Yeah.
They don't just, we don't just pay them. We also have to discuss with them how to.
Right. And then, and they get input from us that explains it. So the board and superintendent together choose few standards from the workbook that we normally use. And the items, and then they put. Do you get what you think you want? Then they determine if that's feasible. Well, I gather that information and our fingerprints find all of it.
So it sounds like it would take us about plus some time to have a discussion on further details. So I would make a motion that we ask OSBA to proceed with this and then schedule time into our December meeting to discuss a few more details.
Okay, I have a motion to proceed and to look again in December. Not showing a second is their discussion.
Well, my discussion is just that there's $2,000 more dollars that we don't have.
And the window that they give us of hours also is a large window. So it could double between the low and the high end of the window that they're giving up.
That doesn't make any.
Um, and I wonder if we have influence on how much time it takes them willing, uh, based on how much we're also willing to do and if we can.
Did mention, um, Ash is hopping virtually to a board meeting for a few minutes to explain this board. We should be scheduled that for this meeting. We can do it for next meeting, having it explained in detail. I have been a need from us.
Always happy to hear from.
Amount of time that they spend, but it's going to be decreased that for all of it, so.
Before we hire, yeah. Then I, that's a different plan.
We've got a motion on table.
We have a motion on the table and a second and the discussion surrounding. That discussion did sound like it made a different turn into, uh, what I would interpret as a postponement in a way, uh, but a motion to go forward to schedule this for December meeting, second and a discussion, uh, are we ready to vote? Although.
Clarify what the motion is. Can you please restate the motion?
The motion as I made it was to proceed with hiring OSBA to uh, do the survey and then to also schedule time in the, the December meeting to plan out that survey.
Okay, but that wasn't part of the original motion. The original motion was that we were going to pay.
Yeah, no, no, that was the original motion is to pay and then to, um, because we have to do the work with, once we pay, then we have to do the work with OSBA to plan it. But it sounds like we have a different plan, but that was my original motion.
Okay, then we have a motion to go forward and to discuss that, uh, to go forward with hiring OSBA to do the targeted feedback survey and to discuss the content in our December meeting. Is this correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor. All opposed.
It's exciting meeting, Corinne.
I am open to another motion.
Going to have Stephanie contact them so they could present to us more information about the December meeting.
I have a motion.
That's where I got confused.
It was a lot of. Yeah, it was confusing.
I have a first to wait until the December meeting and have OSBA present further information at that meeting before a decision's arrived.
And I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion?
My only concern there is just that bumps our timeline back a little bit. But I think if we're trying to work with them to make it simpler and we have that discussion in the December meeting, we can we just say, here's our timeline. This is when we need it. Let's make it happen.
Yeah.
Okay, then bring to vote, all in favor. That one's unanimous.
Thank you.
A bit more normal.
I just really appreciate that our board taking these things seriously and it's just not a rubber stamp. Yeah, rubber stamp. Yeah, rubber stamp. Yeah.
Really?
So.
And I've, I have enjoyed, yeah, hearing back and it's okay to have those, I guess, disshovelings. It means that we're intentional. Um, moving forward now, we have no first reading of policies, no second reading of policies. Right?
Since about all we would have.
Right. Um, for the comments or reports?
I have a comment. Okay, so my question is, um, earlier in the meeting, we approved some of the curriculums for the family academy. And some curriculums, we were going to, um, access more information. So my question is, um, if we decide that after further investigation, we would support a curriculum, do we contact you to have it added to the agenda? Do we talk to Stephanie to have it added to the agenda or does it just sit there until someone? Some family wants us to reevaluate?
I would be putting it on the agenda for you again in December.
Okay.
That would be a recommendation of mine, that that be an agenda item because it's one that was tabled. You want more information, so we will, um, do more research and have, um, either nothing to share. Because we'll say, oh, we found something and we can't put this in front of you. Or we will have a presentation to share why we think that it should be approved and that'd be in the December meeting. And then if we have, again, if we had, uh, future pieces come up, new family moves in or family wants a different curriculum and it's not on the list, then we would be doing the same thing, getting it onto the agenda, having discussion and presentation and determining whether it's approved or not.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify what that process would be.
Yeah, I have it on my notes to, to place it on the agenda again next month and I have more information to share with you or not.
Thank you.
It's just the two, right?
Yes. Yeah.
I want to thank you guys for going to the conference and, uh, I wanted to give a shout out to the folks who did the student performances.
Oh, yeah.
That was my favorite. Um, these are the folks that sponsored them. And, uh, that was a special thing. I was really, really, really glad. It did make me miss music. Anybody have anything else from the con, conference that they wish to share?
I, I enjoyed the time. It was, I think like Aaron said, it was, the presentations were great, but it was also helpful just the chance to see things and experience them together and it was good. We missed you.
There were, yeah. Overall, very positive experience. It's nice to just be together with a large group of people who are engaged in a common goal, um, with a wide variety of experiences and exposure that, uh, to just pick, work out, get ideas from. You have a ton of things all by yourself.
Right.
There was this spooky thing about Ashland. There was a little air raising there. Well, well, that's, that's the district where they discovered, uh, like almost overnight that they were $8 million short on their butt. All the recovery they did go through to do that and they had a school board member resident there and another, another member of the school board. And one of the frightening things was it wasn't that they weren't giving, being given information. It's just that every time they got information, they accepted it and assumed that, that what they were being told was in fact the case. And there was many places along there where assumptions were being made on wildly over optimistic estimates of things. Uh, uh, on what was going to be coming in and basically part blown and what was going out. The result was, yeah. The graph. And I'm not saying that we're in danger of that, but I think it was definitely, definitely a shot across the bow. We've got to be very, very careful about and know more about what's going on. Uh, I did like, this is where we saw the presentations that were the tools, I should say, it was, that was, that was shown was a, a graph. Simple graph, two line graph, month by month, the end is money out. Trending over a year. Because you can get lost in all those numbers. Not that the numbers are not important, because that's where, you know, somebody wants to take care of the nickels and dimes and the dollars take care of themselves. You have to look at that kind of stuff. But, uh, seeing the overall trend, I thought was, was in a nutshell right there. That, that really felt are we on a sustainable level here or are these, or are these slopes all going the wrong way?
And if you see something presented like that, that you would like, um, for us to work on, like the enrollment piece, it takes us a little while to get it together and get it right. But Carol's had some good suggestions with how we present data and how, um, some of the things that Tara looks at and get shared with you as well. So if you see something that is effective, um, definitely, uh, let us know that information. And, uh, we can try and incorporate it into, into what we do if we can do it easily. And it's something that's going to make things, uh, more clear. Because that, um, that's a huge swing, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, I had a, I had two Fridays when I was a principal. We had meetings and I had one meeting where we showed up and they told us we had to cut 200,000 and then the next Friday it was eight. And it was, it was clerical things. It was, um, how things got coded and, you know, a simple mistake can turn out to be not so simple. Can be a very large mistake. Newberg went through that, uh, a few years ago, uh, with a very similar situation. Um, so it's not something that happens all the time, but it happens often enough and there's enough, uh, details and pieces in the budget where it's, it's not easy, but it is easy where you could get off with a, a mistake or a zero in the right place.
For example, one of the things he pointed out early on in that place was he realized from the price of fifth in 156, this country's code part is out. Ooh, even a big district, that sounds crazy. So. Wow, I don't know how many we got, but I trust there's nowhere here.
We'd have to have three for every employee.
People are charging for not reporting into algorithms.
And that's a whole nother piece.
But that was exactly what the guy said. Reality was they had no control of what's being spent because everybody was spending like there was no tomorrow.
And, and obviously not going through the legal processes, all the accounting.
See, they get on it.
There's a wonderful kind of footnote sort of thing in the eye. There really wasn't a, what you would think was as a classic, okay, this isn't working. It was just, it was some fairly bland comment. That was really the only thing they had.
But that was the avenue that got them to realize the mistake.
No, it was worse than that. I got this card. I've, I've got this card.
He was in Rainier, we, we worked together for two years before he went to Ashland before I left. So if you want some, uh, other, if you have some questions, I might be able to ask Joseph and get some answers.
Okay.
One of the, one of the things that was a new experience for me at this convention was having students present. And having those student representatives attend the conference. And I didn't know this until I sat at the invite a student representative to the board hot topic roundtable moment. And I wonder if we, I feel like I appreciate all of the support in the training and I'm not into dipping into our budget too much, but I do think that that would be a great leadership and growth opportunity for any student.
Well, we're going to have $71, $7100 more next year.
The children, the students that were there were so well spoken and well composed. It was really inspiring to see them, um, hold their own at the table and to be looked at for their own expert opinion.
I like that idea theory, but it is something that I would want more information on because you're talking about a minor and they're potentially attending a school function. And so where does the responsibility begin and where does the responsibility end? And are we paying for the parent of that student to also attend or another person who is a responsible guardian or are we paying a staff member, a stipend to attend and be the school staff person supporting that student? Um, and the whole motel issue of an. And the whole motel issue of an unsupervised minor in the motel room? And I'm just thinking of all of the travel I've done with school to street functions.
I think we would have very different logistics. These sounded like they were coming from very large districts that were probably central to the Portland area.
Yeah. So.
But it was inspiring to share space with.
And I'm sure, yeah, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying I would want a lot more information before I got super excited about that idea, not because I don't want the student to come in. That's our seventh.
All I can think after that is I want mom and dad. Mom or dad.
And I guess the last thing that I would mention is that we have our Bonds, Ballots and Buildings Conference Friday, February 6th at the Salem Convention Center. And that would be a unifying thing to attend if a bond is on our horizon.
Maybe you'll pay with it, pay for it.
Right? But that was just checked, right? I just, I checked that when we talked about the policy review. This one conference does sound like it's been penciled in or considered?
The bonds?
Yes.
I'm a ten. I have my, I have a different part of professional development money than y'all. But I think it would behoove us to have one or two other people go. I don't think it's one where the whole board needs to go. But I'm going to be having community input meetings in January, starting in January again. And seeing where people are at with how much, you know, getting to a more final detail of how much money we think we can afford as a community and support. And then what are the priorities of how we spend that money if we earned that much in a bond? I still don't think the political climate is, is right. The, with Bond Council, in my initial discussions with them, they're, they're looking at next November as a potential. But I want to go through and have those discussions and kind of have a real solid idea of what we're going to spend money on for a bond. And then when the time is right, we've got just very little tweaking to do for our ask and request. But the timing of when is, is going to be crucial and critical to our ability to pass. And I think that doing the legwork beforehand now to be prepared is wise. So I would, I am planning on going. I'm continuing to have meetings with the Bond Council and people who would help us pass a bond. As well as setting up those meetings to get enough input from community and staff so that we're all on the same page and we're pretty solid with our request. So we pull the trigger when it's the right bond cycle, the right election cycle.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Anybody want to share? I'd like to say, go Blanco. That's a really great sock. Any correspondence? Sure? Are there any future agenda items that we wish to consider? All right. Here's at this time, we'll move to item 14, which would be our executive session. Is this where we are? All right.
Thank you, Rusty.
Yeah, I just want to go back.
Thank you, Rusty.
Now you can go ahead and repeat.
Now we'll move forward to our executive session, 14.1 Superintendent Evaluation Check-in, number 1, O R S 1.9 or 192.660, parenthesis 2, parenthesis I.
Ending executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Motion and second seeing no further business this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.